Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6:04 PM for the 6:00 PM meeting. I'm getting better. My brain's catching up to my legs. On April 10, 2023, a town hall on the Milford Select Board regular meeting. And this evening, we will reorganize the board, which is a common practice. And at this point, I would make a nomination that my colleague Paul Mazakelli serve as chairperson for the next year.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
In favor?
And I thank you. Just to say a few words, if you don't mind, I just want to thank my fellow board members for having the trust in me to serve as chair of the Select Board. And I appreciate the last two years that I served with such outstanding members such as Tom and Mike. The last two years, they more or less guided me along with this new position that I have. But also, I would like to mention the benefit that we have from our immensely talented and hard-working employees that serve the town of Milford residents day in and day out. The board has always worked very cooperatively with each other. And what makes us an effective board is that we always know how to differ with one another very respectfully. And that has helped us along the way to make decisions, and important decisions, based on facts and no other way to do that. And I want to continue this approach this year and help us to do all we can to make Milford the best town that it can be. And I thank you again for this opportunity.
Well deserved.
Now, to get on with the agenda, I would entertain a motion for the signing of the warrant.
Make a motion to sign the warrant, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Tom.
I would second that.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion for the approval of minutes of a regular scheduled meeting for March 27, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the March 27 regular meetings, 2023.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for the executive session minutes of March 27, 2023, at 5:30 PM.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes, March 27, 2023, 5:30 PM.
And I would second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Our next order of business would be a public hearing. It is to start at right now. The board will hold a public hearing for the proposed relocation and discontinuance of the public way of Old Cedar Street. I believe the other gentleman here that was supposed to be here?
Well, we're not certain that they're going to be here. I mean, they may. I haven't spoken to them.
I have not, but they were sent notice.
Yeah, they got the notice. It's possible that they, I can't speak for them, it's possible that they think they don't have to be here because the articles are Sleckman's articles and Sleckman are laying it out. I mean, I sort of hope they'd be here and they may well have sat back and thought, well, we don't, we're not part of this.
The only thing I can remember is several months ago, maybe two or three months ago, they were here.
Yeah.
They were trying to describe what they wanted to do. And of course, it was also an article on the town meeting warrant that was passed over. So I guess what I should do is.
Well, we can, we can. Yeah, nothing is. We can explain to you what this is all about and your board can then make a decision on whether you want to do the layout and the discontinuance as you see fit, whether they're here or not. I mean, it would have been.
Sure. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
So it's got a long history. The reason I'm here is because I've been part of that history for many years. And if you remember back or if you're aware, back in 2007, there was a proposal. And what this has to do with is Old Cedar Street, which is part of, I believe, a Menden layout of the 1700s. It's a piece that runs beside Wendy's and then runs behind the properties there on Cedar Street, up towards the bicycle trail where there's an old cul-de-sac. It's partially paved. It's old. It's bad shape, obviously. So a proposal came in 2007, if you recall, if you're aware. B.F. Goodrich was going to put a tire center in there and it was a good proposal, I guess. And it went to town meeting and Sleckman laid it out, did the discontinuance and laid out the new street in town meeting, voted to approve it. But it was never finalized because if you recall that time, the economy collapsed in many ways, the real estate market collapsed. B.F. Goodrich walked away from it. So we didn't take the steps that would have finalized it. Now, here we are, a number of years later, and there's a developer who wants to put in, as I understand it, warehouses, mini warehouses.
Storage units.
Storage units. And they have a proposal. They'd like to now, the articles that are in the warrant, if your board is interested in going forward, would rescind those old votes and it would then discontinue Old Cedar Street and would lay out a new Cedar Street, if you will, that really has a long cul-de-sac behind Wendy's. And I think you've got the plans that show that and the plans have been provided to the town clerk and have been posted properly. And those are the plans that would be implemented and voted at town meeting. Now, having said all that, what apparently comes up today is there are some qualms from the town engineer and the highway surveyor about going forward because of issues that, well, Brian and I weren't aware of before today.
Sure.
So you probably really want to hear from them as to whether they have to do with drainage and facilities, I guess, that are underneath the layout. So again, I'm not here and nor is Brian here advocating one way or the other, just so you understand the process. And so the question for you folks is really simple. Do you support the articles and go forward with them and discontinue the Old Cedar Street and lay out the new Cedar Street or not? That's the question. And again, I don't want to put them on the spot, but they're here and they have something to say. So you probably should hear from the town engineer and the highway surveyor.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whoever you want to speak first, Liz or Scott? Down to the front? They don't bite. Thank you. This is Liz Minini, our town engineer, San Quioni.
So my husband will appreciate that. So what, in preparation for tonight's meeting, I was looking at plans and reviewing the Cedar Street area, the old Cedar Street. And as many of you will likely remember, there was a great deal of construction done over there, probably two or three years ago, because there was flooding in the area. And one of the things that they did to correct that was to put underground drainage in, it's underneath the driveway.
Yes, right, right near Wendy's, right? The driveway going next to Wendy's.
The driveway. And that's actually the proposed roadway. So it was something that I felt needed to just at least be known to the town that if we correct, if we obtain or create that public right-of-way, that this drainage now becomes town-owned and at least I think it has to be unless there's some other legal ability to. And, you know, there's maintenance and it's not something that we would typically do. So.
Good to know.
It is a new system. It is a new drainage system. There, the area, in addition to that drainage system, they improved, Wendy's improved some other portions of the drainage. We corrected an issue that was existing in the Cedar Street, no, Dilla Street drainage system. So I don't anticipate there being any, you know, flooding issues or in, but I just felt like it was something, you know, it was an additional piece that we were going to be taking on that we needed to know.
And today it's fine. Who knows what's going to happen in five years?
Yeah. And Scott and I are both in complete agreement about discontinuance of the Old Cedar Street. It's really a nuisance to the town. And discontinuance of that, we're both in complete support of. It's just whether or not there's a better option than a public right-of-way for that existing driveway.
Sure. Scotty?
Yeah, well, start with Old Cedar Street. Yeah, discontinuing Old Cedar Street is, I think it's a great option if we have that. The maintenance I do want is snow plowing and trash picking. And trash picking is constantly mattresses, bags.
Appliances and.
Appliances, name it. It's there and you've called for years over on that stuff. So to get rid of that headache would be great. And like Liz talked about, the underground drainage system, infiltration system, whatever it is, has to be maintained. And that's a yearly thing. You've got to have to get vac trucks in here, vacuum that out. I mean, we do it in other town areas, the project we did on Town Park, that was the infiltration system. And that comes with maintenance, but that's part of our stormwater management project. So it's just the maintenance that I wrote. The snow plowing and the sand, and that's not a huge deal, but the maintenance of that system underground could turn into a headache. And it's definitely going to cost my department money to do that.
Sure.
So I just want to make that known, you know? And if there is a way to do it so we don't have to maintain it, that would be great. That's not something typically we would put in a regular town road. We would never do it underground drainage system, which is the maintenance is too much. Even if you have to pave the road over, it becomes a headache. I'm not even sure how to deal with it if we have to do the road over. So the maintenance is my biggest issue with it.
Can you just? So given those things, I mean, both Brian and Jerry, I mean, everybody's in favor of giving Old Cedar Street. The issues are lying there with New Cedar Street and as we discuss some other issues of my, why do we want to assume somebody else's, you know, liability? Is there a way of creating not only just the use so people can pass through there to get to the bike path? They've agreed to create parking spaces for the bike path, so I think they're creating that use anyway. And there's, no one knows the recreational use better than you, Brian. Passive recreational use for our liability, but, and let the system be theirs and whoever has it now, it's theirs. And we just walk away from Old Cedar. Does that make sense?
Well, and Jerry, correctly, but I mean, you have two votes in front of you. So conceivably, you could go forward with vote number one to, you know, rescind the vote of '07, but essentially revoking the Old Cedar Street. And then the second vote could be held off depending upon what the developer and what the buyer and the seller may want to work out. It was mentioned by Larry today that there is easements for the property adjacent to Wendy's to use that. I haven't seen the easement, so I'm not sure. I don't know if you saw the easement.
I've never seen them, no.
No. But that was, so if there are easements, I mean, then that's something that could be worked out with buyer and seller. But you do have two votes.
Yeah, I know there was talk of that. That's why I was curious as far as access to bike path. And they said they would create some parking.
That would, yeah, that would come up at a later stage, before that. Now, Brian and I, again, having found, both of us having found out about these issues today, we spoke late in the day. And the possibility, towns can not only lay out public ways, they can lay out private ways. It's part of the same statute. But obviously, the result of that is diff. So the first thought that we had today and talked about briefly was whether or not this can be done under these articles, laying out a private way. Frankly, we'd probably have to start over and have a new public hearing, a new notice to do it as a private way. It may be possible, and my suggestion might be, we still have time before town meeting, that you continue this question now for, to your next meeting. In the interim, we can see what, if anything, can be done to move in that direction, which may, if we do it as a private way, the public then has a right to use it. That's the essence of a publicly laid-out private way. But we won't own the utilities underneath, the drainage or any of that. Doesn't mean we should do it, but at least that part of it would be, would be solved.
And we're not responsible for the things Scotty talked about.
No, we wouldn't be responsible at that point in time, no.
So Jerry, you're saying continue both?
I'm saying continue any action tonight, maybe for your next meeting.
Okay. I agree with that.
Reach out to the developer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that crunching time, Jerry?
I don't think so.
If a special meeting's necessary, I say do it.
Yeah, and that's what we might conclude when we talk is that maybe we just should start the whole thing over again, give a new notice to lay out, to discontinue and lay out a private way. Might be the way to go, but it's something I don't want to self-commit to right now because I just don't know. But a couple of weeks should give us time to decide that and maybe move it in that direction. Worst case, from the developer's standpoint, not worst case, but it might have to wait for another town meeting if it's, if it's too complex.
We'd definitely have to wrap the developer and the seller into the conversation.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Before we take a vote, I'd like to ask the public, where it's a public meeting, to come up to as well. Anybody from the public might be heard. Yes, Jamie?
I hope you didn't hear guys in traditional sense. No.
Jimmy would be upset.
Thanks for opening up the public hearing and allowing some comment before it gets continued to another day because I would like to weigh in on it. The developments in the last five minutes are really intriguing and interesting. I'm going to just make my statement that was formed before the six minutes ago revelations. So around seven months ago, when this discontinuation sale plan came to town hall, it looked so self-serving, I figured it was a citizens initiative sponsored by the developer. It turns out it was sponsored by the Select Board, and now the Select Board has brought it back unchanged from the original proposal. This plan gives the two property owners and the developer, buying the multiple parcels, everything they want and simplifies the work for town hall that needs, that they would need to do. And in return, provides Milford residents the weakest assurance that the bike trail connector with an unspecified amount of trailhead parking will be treated as anything more than an afterthought in the developer's plan. The town is losing 1.3 acres of a 50-foot right-of-way that is the best route of the path and could easily provide 100 parking spaces along the sides of the existing roadway, even allowing for curb cuts. So what was there, besides the fact that it's been blocked off by the town for a variety of reasons, was an amazing asset, but because it's been blocked off for at least 20 years, there's no pressure about what we're losing because it's been gone for so long. Lots and lots of people already, the existing property owner has been relatively generous about not ticketing or towing people. And a lot of people use between the Wendy's and the other property owners to do recreational parking there for whatever reasons they want to do. Anyhow, it's been really great that a lot of people have benefited from that. One of the owners has owned their parcel for over 30 years, the other for over 20 years. The most important thing the developer wants is to join the two separated parcels to create a more interesting development proposal on their side. I'm not trying to stop the development specifically. I don't really care. I think that Milford is changing and buildable lots will be built on. And we have to rely on the zoning regulations and planning regulations to make sure people comply with what they can do in the right space. So I'm not saying stop it at all costs, but I think town hall should negotiate at a minimum a land swap, which they've done for other sections of the bike trail behind Hanaford, when the train right-of-way was inconvenient for the owners of that property. That land got moved to the side. The bike path coexists now off to the side, out of the way. I believe the residents of Milford deserve approximately 60 parking spaces, committed 60 parking spaces, preferably in a deed. In other words, instead of the relatively minor cul-de-sac with about enough space for turning around, and maybe that whole drawing is just the loosest of conceptual drawings, so maybe I don't need to focus on it, but it doesn't actually show a real promise to develop a meaningful public service for what we're giving up, which is the 1.3 acres of right-of-way that's been, well, underused because of how things have been blocked off to prevent parking and dumping and stuff. So I'm really excited about the fact that you guys might take this back to the drawing board and figure out how to work with the sellers and the buyer. And I hope that you will look into a commitment of 60-ish parking spaces, whether it's a land swap and we still own the land.
Sure.
Or it's built into the sale deed, but I'm not really comfortable hoping that the planning board will feel in a strong enough negotiation position to wrestle more than a handful of parking spaces out of the developer. And I'm also not 100% sure that the planning board will guarantee that the path isn't just on some scrappy part of the property that's not. In other words, I don't want the path to be the second thought of what the developer needs to do because the path, existing path, has been dynamite for all these years. And I'm concerned that the development could stall and the path could be closed for a variety of reasons that seem temporary, but then the construction could stop. I would like a commitment from the developer that there will always be a path, even if they have to move it twice while they do different configurations of construction. Milford residents benefit a lot from the existing Old Cedar Street. And I'm fine with a new path. Doesn't have to be what's there. So that's all I want to say today.
We definitely thank you very much.
Thank you.
We get your point. Thank you so much, and we'll be considering that as we talk amongst ourselves, too. Thanks, Jamie. Anybody else like to be heard? There's a Rita McNamara on the line, too. Is she here for that? Okay. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Fred Elliott. Five Elm Street, Milford.
Hi, Fred.
So private ways were mentioned. I've done some research over the years into private ways. Private ways are not private property. There's a lot of court cases in it. So it's not a piece of property that somebody pays taxes on. It's a sort of nowhere's land of property. And what it is, is a roadway that the town doesn't pay to pay, doesn't pave it, it doesn't maintain it, doesn't plot what, it's not really private property. And I didn't realize that talking about giving up all of Old Cedar Street, that would be a disservice to the town to give up all of Old Cedar Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to be heard? If not, I'll entertain a motion to delay any decision until we have another meeting. I make a motion to delay until our next meeting so that we can discuss it with the proposing developer as well as legal counsel and other residents of the community to include those that spoke this evening.
Right. And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
May I make that unanimous? Thank you. Next on the agenda is scheduled appointments. We have Parks and Recreation. Jimmy Asom, the director. Jimmy, we have to get you out of the woods, man. You know what I'm saying? Scaramelli? Scaramelli? Scarlata. Scarlata, okay.
So I invited, thanks for having us today.
Thank you for coming.
I was speaking with the commissioners and I felt it was important to sort of update the Select Board on projects that we have ongoing within our parks. One of them being the town pool, which Tom is here to speak about, a little more in-depth for the schedule and whatnot moving forward. But I wanted to start, just to speak about some projects. A lot of people out there in the parks and stuff, but, you know, sometimes it gets lost in, you know, what the department's actually doing on a daily basis, but just all the projects that we have going on at this point, I just felt it was good to update everyone, the board here and also any of the residents that may be curious. First of all, in the last year or so, we've had the cultural council donate concrete game table installed at Town Park, along with attached game boards on the existing picnic tables at Louisa Lake. This was all part of their art initiative program, added painted picnic tables that you see throughout our parks and the park barrels throughout the parks and along, you know, Main Street and along the trail, all created by local artists. And we'll continue that initiative with the cultural council, you know, as we move forward with different ideas they may have for our parks. Tank Field renovations, we had an addition to the new playground area at Tank Field, thanks to generous donations of Celebrate Milford, Dewey Pest and Wildlife, Cloud Solveit, the Rissity family, and Jerry and Steve Addings. They took up one day with our contractor and all came and, you know, lent a hand to get the park done in less than four hours. It was a great transition from the old equipment that's there. And it's all part of our ADA assessment, complacency, that we're trying to update all our playgrounds within the town, and we'll continue to do so. I believe I gave a flyer for the Louisa Lake Disc Golf Park. So I met, I've been a year or so ago, I was talking about this Disc Golf Park down at Louisa Lake, and we finally completed it. And it was a long road, but we went through the proper channels with conservation and with the collaboration of many departments in town. You know, my department was able to get it done. And I have to applaud my employees. You know, they went in and when we had the break from the sports that we were taking care of, they went in and, you know, took care of business and we got, were able to get it done. So we're holding an event this Saturday from noon to 3:00. We're inviting the entire community, might have heard it on IFM. IFM's also had on their Facebook page. I think it'll be a great event. It'd be great if any of you could attend and for all the residents that may be listening, you know, just to learn about the sport. There's been a lot of questioning, you know, what is it and this and that? It's something that's come really alive during COVID. And there's over 60 courses in the state of Massachusetts, and we have one of them now.
It's pretty good.
Being well-received and at a later date, once we get, you know, more situated, I'll share some of the numbers with you because I'm able to track the people that use it. So anyone that uses a scorecard with this specific app, I can track. And I know already from January, we've had 350 unique users. I mean, if I, if I went, if I went and played five times, I'm one person, but it keeps track of that. And on top of that, we've had over 1,100 rounds played.
Wow.
So, and that's with people that are using the app. So it's fun to watch that, to see it grow because you see the interest is there.
Interest there, yeah.
So this, this event will be, you know, I think, a great addition for our recreation in town. And, you know, through the process, you know, the youth center's been supportive of community use, and we're hoping that they're able to use that for some of their programs. On the ongoing project scene, there's a few more than the finished projects, but the expansion of Louisa Lake parking lot. So with the added recreation at Louisa Lake, I worked with Liz and Scott to come up with a plan to expand the parking lot, which is going to benefit all events down at Louisa Lake, including the use of the bike trail. So the plan right now is to increase the parking by 34 spots in that area that's been cleared. I'm sure you've seen it going by. But that's what's going there. It's, it's not a dog park. It's not a grocery store. There were some different things I've heard about it, but it's going to be a parking lot, and I think it's going to benefit that whole area. And we found out during COVID also that that parking lot was very popular, you know, being for the trail, even though there's 200 spaces down at, you know, Fino Field. Everyone likes that spot with the water in it. It's a real nice area.
For sure.
On top of that, at Louisa Lake, the Milford Lions Club donated a $35,000 pavilion to be installed in the coming months, hopefully by the second week in May.
Beautiful.
Scott is going to assist on that. And between our departments, we'll put the pad in, and then the company will come in and install it. You know, so the only cost is really for the pad and the electricity that we'll be putting in. We'll run a line to the existing electricity that's there. And the company will come in and put it up. So that was a welcomed donation from the Milford Lions Club. And I'd like to thank, you know, Lenny Markon for, you know, meeting with me and with some of the other members to, you know, put that forth. to, you know, put that forth. So it's a 20 by 40 pavilion that will be going up. It'll benefit for all our events down there. We have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts that use Louisa Lake. We have the fishing derbies. Gone down so many times where there's been pop-up tents because the weather's not cooperative, but it's going to be nice to have a pavilion there and it'll be somewhat smaller than the one at Plains, but it'll still be used quite often, I'm sure.
Beautiful.
The walkway repairs, we went to town meeting for some money for, through capital, our capital plan. Those repairs have been delayed. We had to go through some DEP approvals. So right now we're looking at that project starting in June. And that is the northern side of Plains Park. If you've been down there, you've noticed that it's been 22 years now since, 21 years since that park was built. And it's, it shows its age in the walkways. So we're going to, basically what's happened is the walkways have settled. So the water from the fields aren't, isn't draining properly. So it builds up puddles in different areas. Weston and Sampson doing all the monitoring had pointed this out to us and, and we decided to move forward with repairing it. So we're hoping to do the northern side this June and then hopefully in another year, we can move to the southern side, going from the pavilion over towards the other parking lot near the playground. And then those walkways will all be repaired. The renovations to Prospect Heights Playground. If you've been up there, we've removed a lot of the old apparatuses. They were old, dangerous. So we've removed them. There's plans in June, June and July to install a whole new apparatus. Part of our ADA compliance initiative through the town. Will be putting compliant walkways from the, from the existing walkways to the playground and making that ADA compliant also. Charles River Watershed Project that was in collaboration of, that was up at Town Park with the rain gardens. You might have noticed the rain gardens at the school and inside the park along with the filtration infiltration system that went underneath the bandstand that you can't even see. Scott's department did a great job with that. We've worked together with departments again where, you know, we assisted in, you know, keeping those trimmed up and we're actually planning an event, a ribbon cutting May 6th that we're, you know, here to invite you guys to also. I'm sure you've heard of it already, but it's going to be a good event. I know State Representative Murray's going to be there and some other dignitaries. So I think it's going to be a nice event for the, for the community and just to get out and see what's happening in our parks. And I think it's really going to, that's, it's, we put one of those chess tables right next to it, the concrete chess table, the cultural council, right next to one of them. It looks really nice. And then with, our next thing was the grant application that we submitted. We had the forum upstairs and we talked about the grant that the town and Mitra City had assisted in. We're hoping to hear from them in May, which will be a big stepping stone for Town Park. And, you know, look forward to some really nice upgrades up in that park. So we're still, you know, waiting on that, but these rain gardens sort of complement that where it's sort of like a jump start. You know, you start seeing the stuff being done and then with this grant money, we can concentrate on the walkways and the the courts and, and, you know, the bathrooms and, you know, things that, you know, need addressing, but they're, they're just, you know, old.
Like those rain gardens have like two, 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 two jobs. One is the aesthetics part. The other one is to actually help the stormwater, to clean the stormwater a little better.
Right. And on top of it, so there's some signage that's been put up at each rain garden at each area. And it's sort of like a learning thing for, a learning tool for the schools.
That's great.
Students, you know, the teachers could use it as a learning tool and bring it up, bring the kids up there and sort of, you know, show them what's going on. You know, so it's, it sort of works in every direction.
Sure does.
Pretty cool.
Excellent.
And that's, you know, that, that goes back to Scott and Mike Dean, you know, securing that grant money that they got for that. And that was, you know, great that, you know, the parks sort of just benefited from it. You know, they had, you know, four or five different areas within the town and they said Town Park and I was all, you know, on board. I brought it to the commissioner like, yeah, absolutely.
That's great.
Why wouldn't you?
Right.
And improved some of the drainage going down to Stacy where we always had that runoff there.
Yeah, runoff there, yeah.
I think it's going to, you know, be something that we can enjoy for years to come. And then last but not least, you know, Tom, Tom, he gets to hear all about the parks, not just the pool. But, you know, Tom Scarlata, he is our architect. And I've been in close contact with Tom for, you know, months now, just sort of, you know, getting up plan, getting a schedule in place. And I'll let Tom talk more about in detail, you know, where we're at and where we're headed with the pool project.
Excellent. Thank you.
Tom's hair should look like mine. I've been reading a lot of stuff about the pool. Go ahead, Tom.
Well, anyway, I'm Tom Scarlata with BH+A. I've been working with Jim for quite a while on this. The last time we had met, we had a presentation on that hot August night
Right.
at the pool and then town meeting was that, you know, October, whenever that, whenever that occurred. And then since then, again, I'm my, you know, trying to move the job forward. And again, I'm not, we're behind where we should be, but I've had issues with consultants, not going out of business. We also had some changes to some of the wetland regulations, or at least our flood zones. So the bottom line is now we are pushing to get the documents out to bid so we can break ground in July. We're not going to have the pool, but we're going to, we're shooting to get the building, which is part of the park now, as well as the playground. Because again, this park, this project was always part of a bigger project.
Right, right.
So that way you'll have that. And what happened is we had the flood plain line after we had everything flagged and surveyed was much further up the hill than we had it. So what we have to do, the building, and I'd be happy to come back or I don't know if there's a way that you can post the, the current design. But the building is actually sits right on the, the edge of the bike path across from Fino Field. We're elevated because I have to allow, in the event of a flood, I have to allow water to displace in and out. Which brought some challenges to the building, but also we have now a building that'll have a control room, a real lifeguard first aid room, and then the public bathrooms are designed so that they support the pool. But also they're designed so that in the, when the pool is closed in the shoulder seasons, which will occur this fall, you'll have access to public bathrooms. It can be a wave finding point for the bike path, as well as just public bathrooms for the, the fields. As well as we're doing some minor modifications to the existing bathhouse on the far end with some fencing and gates. So that can be used as toilet rooms for the
For the swingers?
Well, not for, no, for the
Oh, the baseball?
For the baseball field.
Okay.
It allows Jim to get rid of all the porta-johns all over the park.
Sure.
Again, the park, you know, the, the pool itself, the general plans remain the same. We finalized the footprint of the pool, the, the spray deck, which actually we're all sitting within the existing footprint of that pool. You're having a very generous pool and a spray deck. The spray deck would be set up so that can be used when the pool is closed. So even at various times, that, that'll be available for users. And on the far side, again, everything will be fully accessible. We went through great lines with the park, with the pool itself, the pathways, all existing benches, so you can get up to them. There's a lot of amenities in there. And again, on the far side, there's a playground, there will be a playground. And again, now we're setting that up so there will be a drop off with accessible parking. And that's on the sort of this driveway that goes over to the, the far ball field, I want the field as called.
Yeah, a lot of that.
Yeah. And then, but that way there's a playground that's, it's part of this project, but it's basically for the park. There'll be a way when the pool is open and people, we're going to have to, working out in terms of the control of it. But we always have to have the pool has to be secured. So again, we're adding, first of all, the fence that you have there now isn't compliant. So we're replacing the fencing, but we're also adjusting it so that we can secure the pool, but also allow access to the other activities here. Again, I think the biggest thing with the project, which was always intriguing, is that again, a lot of, it's, it's hard to sell a pool, but when you can make a pool part of a park. And then we have my main building is supporting other park functions. We take the existing building, support park functions. Plus have the ability, like the playground is a bigger, it's a need in the park right now. You'll have that as part of it. So. We're looking at the way now, we're finalizing the engineering on it and all that. My drawings have been done, not, are almost done for quite a while, but get this out on the street and bid. There's actually a good market now for pool contractors. There was kind of a dearth of, some people, again, went out of business. But in terms of the pool contractors, I've been talking with, I have a couple of jobs currently out there that are very interested. It's a good sized project for a number of them. It's bid to a general contractor, will do the pool as part of his work because he's got a good sized building to do now. And I think we're going to end up doing the playground as a separate bid and that can go out independently to work.
So you figure too then, probably be the summer of '24?
Yep. But the goal is though, they have the buildings, the other park pieces ready.
You're going to be working on them pretty soon to get them going, too.
Yeah.
I think it's a great community investment, really. It not only provides great use for public health, you know, for exercise and whatnot, but, you know, gets families and communities together and whatnot.
And we're correcting a lot of issues that are down at the pool now relative to disposal of waste. Again, we have stormwater. We have, I'm putting a building up, so we'll have a recharge system that goes in the ground. We won't be dumping pool water somewhere that shouldn't be going right now into quarantined water. So we'll be treating that. But, you know, in terms of upgrading the facilities for power and things, we work with Jim and then your, the arborist, basically we had to take some, a lot of fallen trees are down there, but overall it's just, you know, it's moving forward.
So a lot of the kinks are out now, right, between, you know, wetlands protection, all that?
Right. Peter no longer has to go down into that pit.
Right.
We're bringing everything up. He's got, there's a new building that sits on top of that, which will provide, is a location for, a much safer location for the filter systems. We're bringing all the utilities into there and then we'll have a sub, all the power goes into there. So there's a safe place for him to work, work on the filters, also have service. So again, that's, that's, I've been in that and it's not a place you really want to go.
And when the design was originally decided on by the commission and this was all a vision as far as, you know, the multipurpose. Having the playground, but it's not just for the pool. It's for trailer users. It's for people that might be at the ball game. And the same with the bathrooms, as Tom had mentioned, the bathrooms is a big thing. We have porta-johns all over the place. We need to have something and these bathrooms are going to allow us to, you know, as long as the public makes it work, you know, with vandalism and stuff, those bathrooms can stay open. And they'll be on an automatic lock system where at 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, those will lock. You're in, you can get out, but you can't get back in. So that's going to, you know, sort of help in that respect.
You don't want to be locked in a bathroom.
Maybe we can still, we've, we've tried it at Town Park before with the bathrooms being open. We've had some bad results. So if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work. You know, it's unfortunate, but we can at least try it and, and see if that's something we can do. But again, the multipurpose where anyone in the annex of sports, you know, they'll have bathrooms right there. They won't have to go into a porta-john, which everyone likes so much. And, you know, Fino's not always open, so you can't go into Fino. Sometimes, you know, there's a ballgame going on, so you can go in and use the bathrooms there, but that's not always the case. So I think the whole multipurpose of that complex sort of coming together.
That's what makes it a good investment. It's not just swimming. It's a lot of other variety of things that you can do.
And that's why I think it's just sort of been a, you know, ongoing process, but the, you know, that's why I felt it was important to come tonight. And then when I spoke to the commission today, I said the same thing that, you know, I just want people to know that it's coming still. It's just, you know, unfortunately it's delayed. It's still going to be nice when it's done, you know, it's just going to be, you know, we're going to have to go one more, one more summer without the pool. But if, if we get done in September and if the weather is like it is now, you know, in September, we could be in nice weather again. We could do some sort of soft opening where the splash pads may be accessible, but not the pool. Where at least you can go into the playground and check out the playground and just sort of get a view of, you know, what it was.
Get a feeling of what's going to happen.
And what it's at now. So if we're able to do that in September, you know, some sort of soft opening, that'd be great. It sort of takes the edge off and then, you know, come June, we, you know, May, June, we open up and
So this, this summer, I still have to use my sprinkler, huh? Any other member? Any questions?
If I could, Mr. Chairman. You know, Jim, I know there's a lot of people that are involved in all the projects that you are involved in as well. But with you taking the lead on these projects, I know that they're going to be just fine.
I appreciate it.
You know, I look at Calzone Park, I look at Draper Park. And having sat on both those committees, you know, there were some obstacles and you stayed the course and, and got them done and they're absolutely beautiful and people in town are talking about them all the time. So I'm excited. I will be at those two grand openings myself. But, you know, looking forward to these other projects that you're working on to see them go to completion, you know, for the residents of this community. And I personally can say if, if, if people only knew the hard work that you and your crew and the commission put into these projects to get them to where they need to be for the citizens of this community, they'd be very appreciative. So from this board member, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for everything you're doing. Continue to keep up the great work.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael. Tom?
No, Jimmy, I think you've done a fantastic job and I know you've stayed on top of it, working with other departments. Pandemic, pools became the biggest thing ever. Before, if you had a pool at your house, you lost value. Today, it's skyrockets. And to get professional people in such as yourself and those contractors, it's difficult. And that's, you know, everybody falls in line. The fact that this is a larger project is more attractive to them, without a question. I, you have, you've juggled many, many balls in the air in trying to get different things done and I know you were questioned quite a bit, but when all is said and done, you stayed the course and we ended up with something that is, my colleague Mike said, Mike Walsh, that really is a fantastic attribute to the community, but a great piece of work. So I think this will be likewise. And I think to have bathroom facilities available to all the different facets of this complex, to me makes all the sense in the world because different people go there for different reasons based upon the age of their children and what the likes of that child are at that point. So I think it makes sense. How tall's the fence?
Because right now it's five. Great job. Everybody can tell you, like I said, you've added a lot of good quality to the town. Property values with that would go up just because of the parks that we have. It's like the town's gem. And thank you too for all your help too. And like I said, the health, health and environmental benefits that you added through your projects and social importance where families can get together and finally enjoy the outdoors and enjoy Milford's parks. Did a great job. Thank you.
And my door is always open, so this is my social media.
Don't say that now.
This is my social media.
Even you work on, even you work along the bike path with Scotty, you know.
Thank you, Tom.
But it stands out, really, working with the cultural council.
Yeah. I'm going to give this to Rick. He can make copies for you. This is the schedule. He brought that tonight, so at least you guys will have a copy of it.
Oh, that's great.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
As we go on, if there's updates, I'll let you know.
Is that posted on your site or?
I don't have that on my site. I wanted to make sure the commission, you've had it and you guys had it prior to that, so I could put that upon.
Yeah, that'd be great, Jimmy, so people can access it.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We may want to post it, Rick, just so.
Yeah, absolutely. Next on the agenda, under scheduled appointments is Gera Enterprise. Doing business as Milford Goodyear Getty of 232 West Street. They have applied for an amendment to its class two license for a change of name. All paperwork is in order. They're not here tonight, right?
No, it's just simple change of name.
Change of name?
No.
Looking, looking through the departments that would be pertinent to this application. The building commissioner is allowable use. Building is accessible. No public restrooms. Town planner, no change of actual use. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer, there's no required comment. Fire chief, no objections. Police chief, no issues. And Board of Health, no issues at all either as well. Do I have a motion to, for this amendment to change name?
I make a motion that we amend the name for Gera Enterprises Doing Business, Milford Goodyear Getty. As indicated in the amendment to the class two license, change of name application.
You have a second?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two items tonight. The Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission Advisory. I just want to inform the board and the public that on March 29th, the Governor Mara Healy signed into law an act making appropriations for the fiscal year 2023. Included in that is an amendment that extends permitting licensees for on-premises consumption to continue with, one, expanded patio service and, two, the ability to continue with, one, expanded patio service, and, two, the ability to sell alcoholic beverages for takeaway and delivery. Any licensee that has been approved for expanded patio outdoor service may continue this operation until April 1st, 2024. Licensees that seek to continue after that date are encouraged to apply in the ordinary course of an alteration of premises with local licensing authorities. Takeaway and delivery of alcohol establishments licensed for on-premises consumption of alcohol may continue takeaway and delivery of sales again until April 1st, 24. It must include food at the same price as alcohol for on-premises consumption. The second item, I've been informed by Dave Condry, manager of the Water Department, that effective April 24th, the Stage Two mandatory water conservation level will be in effect, meaning that outside water use is permitted between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM on an odd even basis. Those customers with even house numbers may water on even calendar days and those with odd house numbers may use water on odd calendar days. So just a notice for the public and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board members?
No questions.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Next to the agenda, right, Mr. Business, Town Administrator regarding the town meeting warrant.
The warrant is in your packet. I think the board has already seen the number of articles and those articles. It's there for the board's discussion at your discretion. There are 29 articles, I believe, in total.
Sure. Any board member have any?
I believe that we already indicated with Town Council and Associate Town Council that we were going to hold 11 and 12 until our next meeting.
Right, yes, yeah. That will be April 24th right now. Yeah, good.
The other question I had was Article 25, which deals with new hires and how they can be moved to a higher step and how that's accomplished, Personnel Board. It's minus, and we already have something in place for people that are here long-term.
They, we do, they're going to, the Personnel Board is looking to tweak that. I will get information for this board.
They're trying to go back to what was there before. Change was made some, few years ago, replacing what had been in place for many years. So that language you have would put back into place what was there for the prior 40-plus years.
Thank you, that's helpful. Thanks, Jerry. Michael?
All set, thank you.
All set, okay. You don't need a vote on this, Rick, you just?
I do not, no, no vote is required.
Right. On the new business, first is the Commission on Disability Resignation. From Susan Clark, please accept my letter of resignation of the Commission of Disability. It has been a pleasure working with all of you and I have enjoyed my time on your committee. I'll be retiring in March and feel my seat should be held by someone to represent the seniors. Sincerely, Susan Clark. And again, Susan is resigning from this commission, she did retire and we're going to miss her dearly, not only as the Director of the Senior Center, but also on any committee that she's on as well. With that, we also got a letter from Julie Gonzalez, which is the Chair of the Committee. She says, I'm writing to respectfully request that you appoint Susan Albenezi and David Themo Leo, to the Milford Commission on Disability to fill the two vacancies. Thank you for your kind consideration and please reach out with any questions you may have regarding my request. All the best, Julie Gonzalez. Anybody have any comments, recommendations right now or motions?
I would make a motion that we accept Sue Clark's resignation and to send Sue a nice letter indicating that her presence on that commission was valuable, as valuable as it was at the Senior Center.
Sure, thank you, Tom.
She always looked out for the seniors.
Right.
So we appreciate everything that she's done.
Sure, definitely agreed. And that's a second, Michael, you second that?
I'll second that, absolutely.
Okay, how about on the appointment of the individuals?
I would make a motion that we appoint Susan Albenezi and David Themo Leo to the Commission on Disability as requested by Julie Gonzalez, the Chair. I did look at their submissions and I believe that they'll serve the commission well insisting people with disabilities in the community.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous too. And also, again, it's great to see the Chair of a committee or a board give us some sort of guidance on who they would need at that point in time on these committees, such as when Sue mentioned the, some who have some concern for the seniors. We see one particular candidate, Sue Albenezi, who's also a dentist and, you know, oral health is very important for people with, not only for people with disabilities and the elderly, but for everybody, but I guess it's a very big help. And also, David is also very capable of this position as well with his background, so I make that unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Town Administrator regarding stop signs.
Yeah, this is just almost a clerical housekeeping. There are, there were existing stop signs, but they're not listed in the traffic rules and regulations. They're on Overlay Avenue at the, at Westbrook Street. So in speaking with Scott, just to button up any loose ends, he wanted to make sure the board was aware and if they could vote to just replace them and then we'll put them on the books.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the stop signs as indicated in the memorandum from Liz Fernandez dated March 31st, related to Overlay, West Walnut, Overlay Westbrook, and Overlay Westbrook.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I make that unanimous. Just one question, Rick, where is this book?
Liz has got the book.
There is actually, Jerry can explain the book.
Jerry's an expert on the book.
There isn't traffic regulation manual, believe me.
Sign is there, but not in the book. Where is this book?
It's too small for five years.
There is. Best I can say is these signs are probably put up at midnight, Sunday night before a holiday, but nevertheless, they're there.
Okay, we also have, the next on the agenda was Town Administrator regarding Administrative Assistant to Town Administrator and also Administration Services Coordinator, Paralegal Office Manager.
Yes, this is a request, I'll take them one at a time. One is for my assistant, Maria, known as Lena Perez. She's my administrative assistant. The request is for a compensation adjustment of her current Grade Four Step Two to Grade Four Step Five, her hourly rate if effective, effective July 1st would be $33.19 if you approve it. It is made pursuant to the section we just referred to, 3.10 of the Personnel Board Bylaws. Lena has been here since April of 2019. She has far exceeded my expectations as an assistant. She has excellent computer skills, her professionalism and demeanor in dealing with the public is exemplary. She has a tremendous work ethic, she's able to work independently with minimum supervision. She has taken on two initiatives, one to review and approve the permit and licensing process, and I feel she's become pretty much an expert in all the others dealing with the ABCC. She's also taken on a second initiative to reorganize the filing system in the Select Board Office. I can now actually find files when I'm looking for them. So this has really increased the productivity in the office. One final benefit she brings, among many others, is the ability to be fluent in Portuguese and Spanish for our clientele that need those services. So I highly recommend this step increase and I would ask the board to approve the increase subject to approval by the Personnel Board, which I understand is meeting, I believe, on Wednesday.
Does the board want to do both or you want to do one at a time?
However the board wants to do it.
I think you have to do them separately.
Okay. A motion then to approve the increase for the Administrative Assistant.
Make a motion that we approve the increase for Lena Perez. There's no question as far as her professionalism and her willingness to do things far beyond she, and she's asked to do. She is self-initiated, so it always has been, frankly. So I would make that motion.
Sure. Second?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman, as well, and say that I agree with my colleague, Commissioner O'Laughlin, that Lena definitely is a major asset in that office as well as Liz. It's a smooth running machine when you come in there during the daytime and you, and you, you know, you watch what's going on and Rick made reference to the, to the Spanish, you know, language and the number of people that come to that window when, you know, they're able to conduct business without, you know, being able to speak English.
And I agree with the both colleagues, above and beyond their mandated responsibilities. And again, it's just, this increase is within the level that they were assigned to, so it's just a step increase, so that's very important and I make that unanimous.
Thank you. The second request is a similar request for my Administrative Services Coordinator, Elizabeth Liz Fernandez. Right now, she's at Grade Three Step Nine. This is simply a request to Step Ten. She's going to be going there in, on July 1st anyway. Again, made pursuant to Section 3.10 of the Personnel Bylaws. I think Liz has been here at least for all of my tenure as Town Administrator and for many years prior to that. She's actually been in that position since June of 2024. Again, tremendous work ethic, very, very independent, very little supervision is required. She has pretty much taken over paying payroll. She assists in the preparation of town budgets, prepares the annual report. She is able to basically handle every task administratively in the Select Board Office. I've also assigned her what I would call specific projects that I might have and she does all the groundwork, such as for town meeting, presenting articles and things of that nature. Again, she has increased productivity in the office many times over. Again, she is also very fluent in Portuguese, again, another benefit for the Select Board Office. My recommendation here is she just simply go from Grade Three to Step Ten. Again, subject to Personnel Board approval, but effective upon approval of the Personnel Board. So be for a very limited period of time, but I think she needs to be recognized and that she does tremendous work for me and for the town of Milford.
Any comments, concerns, or questions or motions?
I would say I think independent is an understatement.
I hope she's watching.
But, you know, she's moving from, you know, Step Nine to Step Ten, it's nominal.
It pretty much is.
And the work.
I get that, Angela.
You hand her a project and it gets done. She also handles the parking tickets, she handles.
A number of other things that I didn't.
A number of other things that can be a real headache and she does it in the right way and treats people in the community fairly, regardless of their station in life, or where they're from, or who they know. You know, fairness is the bottom line. So having dealt with her on that issue for many, many years, I make this motion to move Liz Fernandez or Elizabeth Fernandez from Grade Three Step Nine to Grade Three Step Ten. As recommended by the Town Administrator.
And I would, I would second that, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, it's an understatement to say that, Rick, you're very fortunate to have.
I have two excellent people, yes.
You're very, very fortunate and again, I go back to saying it's a well-oiled machine, that office. I'm not saying that you're not part of it, but you're very fortunate to have those two ladies in the office with you that do a great job every single day and, you know, when I go in there, not that I'm in there a lot, any time I need anything or I have any questions, even if it's not what I want to hear, I get the answer.
Yeah.
So I would second that in unanimous.
And I'm very comfortable making that unanimous decision.
Thank you very much.
The next one would be the.
Melissa.
Melissa, Paralegal Office Manager.
Brian, Attorney Murray's going to handle that as the department head.
Again.
Series of events here this evening.
Yeah, I know.
So this is very similar to the previous request that you just heard, and this is a request for a compensation adjustment for the paralegal office manager. And again, it's Grade Seven Step Nine, simply to Grade Seven Step Ten. Obviously, the financial impact is minimal, but Melissa Tomas, who holds this position and has worked for the town for 16 years, is imminently qualified. I've been very, very impressed with the extent of independence she has in terms of handling a number of different items that come up in the legal department, particularly as I watch her deal with insurance adjusters. And having done that for my entire career, I know, number one, it's not easy and number two, it ain't pleasant. But she does an excellent job with it and does a great job in terms of recovering benefits on a lot of the motor vehicle accident cases that we have from the town. And that's just a small fraction of what she does day in and day out. So to me, she's imminently qualified. I think that she actually epitomizes, you know, the employee that you referenced in your opening remarks, Mr. Chairman. So similarly to the previous request, I would ask the board to approve this increase, again, subject to approval from the Personnel Board.
Sure. Any other member who would like to be heard?
She's awesome. I can't say enough good things about her. I wish we could afford her. She's, she's a good paralegal, so. I can't, it's an ethics violation. She's really professional, she knows what she's doing. I dealt with her with the very things that Council Murray mentioned and, you know, when I was at the Police Department, she took care of things and presented them to Town Council to ensure that they were on the right track. She's really a super, super hard worker and a very, very nice person, but beyond that, she knows what she's doing. I mean, she's a paralegal, above paralegal. She's really good. So I would make the motion to approve the recommendation from Grade Seven Step Nine to Grade Seven Step Ten, as recommended by Town Council, subject to the approval of the Personnel Board.
And I would gladly second that, Mr. Chairman.
I wholeheartedly.
Definitely an asset to your office.
Into the town.
Yes.
Excellent. Brian, thank you so much and like I said, I wholeheartedly make this unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have a letter from Brendan Rickard. First of all, congratulations Brendan on your victory for school committee member as well. Job well earned. Anyway, Brendan writes to Rick, one of our board members, Susan Caproni, is going to be resigning from the committee this coming Tuesday, April 11th, as her and her husband are leaving Milford. We are planning on a celebration of her many years of service and we're wondering if the Select Board would be willing to issue a proclamation. I understand the timing may be tricky, but I at least wanted to start the ball rolling. So when it comes to tricky proclamations, this board always comes through and we have it ready for them anyway. So, anyway, motion to accept the resignation of Sandra Caproni.
I make a motion to accept the resignation and to thank Sandy for her service to the community and to the operations at the youth center. Brendan was a tough one to vote against when he puts up pictures with his son looking over his shoulder.
Exactly.
Even I couldn't have played that out better. So with that, congratulations Brendan as well, but I would make the recommendation that we provide a citation and to thank Sandy for her contributions and to thank, rather to wish for her and her husband all the best in their future.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman. Having served on the Youth Commission with Sandy for many years, a great member, very involved, very concerned for the children, should be sadly missed. As my fellow colleague, Mr. O'Laughlin, said, I wish Sandy and her husband the best wherever they're heading out to, but again, thank you for your years of service. It was an honor to serve with you, you're a wonderful person. Thank you very much.
I agree. Good luck to Sandy and her husband and her move and good luck to the Youth Commission as well. I make this unanimous in accepting her resignation. Next on the agenda would be the Milford Upper Charles River Trail Committee resignation. Had a letter to, an email to Ricky from Reno del Lucio. Rose Marie Adelson sent me this attached resignation note and I advised Rose Mary to. and I advised Rosemary to send her note to the Select Board. Don't know if you have received it. Margaret Knowlton moved to Brookdale Cushing Park in?
We're not going to deal with that one. We're going to leave that one.
Oh, okay, good, good. Thank you. Anyway, we did get a letter, too, from Rosemary Nadelson, and it says, "Dear Reno, I feel that I can meet, I don't feel I can meet the needs of the Trail Committee, so I'd like to formally resign. Thank you for all you do, Rosemary Nadelson." Any comments or concerns from the board members? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
These are folks that have served over 20 years to help build the pathway. And I want to thank Rosemary for her service. You know, that gem in our community. Many of these folks were there from day one, to include Attorney Brian Murray and so many others. But to thank each and every one of them, but to thank Rosemary as she moves to her next chapter in her life. And, you know, she left the future of this community with a real gem. So, I would move to accept the resignation and to express to Rosemary our gratitude for all that she did in concert with the other committee members to make the trail a reality.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. Michael?
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman. And if we couldn't, Mr. Valani, make sure we send a letter of thank.
Yep, always will, yep.
Thank you very much.
And make that unanimous, and the best to Rosemary. Next on the agenda would be invitation to speak. Anybody online or here? No? Okay. We'll move on to correspondence, which is a letter that we received from Dick Farucci, MYFM Media. He addressed it to Richard Valani, a Town Administrator. "Dear Richard, I am writing to request consideration from the Board of Selectmen to proclaim Louisa Lake to be off-limits for fishing for a period of time preceding our annual free fishing derby for the kids on April 22nd, 2023. The Massachusetts Department of Fisheries and Wildlife will be delivering up to 1,000 trout the day before the derby. Many times in the past, the lake has been fished out. Prior to our event, and the number of fish caught seems to be going down each year. As I mentioned, this derby is completely free for kids from the entire region. It is a great morning filled with families, donuts, milk, juice, t-shirts, trophies, prizes, and more. I just want to ensure we will have the fish. Thank you for your consideration, and I will be happy to attend any meeting to discuss this further. Would it be possible at this time to get approval to hang our banner on the fence at Louisa Lake for the week leading up to the derby itself? Sincerely, Dick Farucci, MYFM Media." Anybody want to comment on that?
Feed the fish the day before. Harder to catch that.
There you go.
That's a thought.
Yes.
This is, it's like announcing you're giving out free water. We all know how that works. I would make a motion that we support the efforts of MYFM Media as it relates to the fishing derby and transmit this to Chief Alvey and to Jim Azim and to ask the police chief if he could have the motorcycle officers give that area a good look. With regard to posting a sign on the fence on park property?
Yeah, Jimmy, he'll have to, I've told he will reach out to Jim Azim. Their authority.
They actually copied him on this letter, too.
Right, yeah.
I just, as far as a different authority. So, I would make a motion that we accept the recommendation that, you know, people not fish in that area the day before, which would be April 21st, 2023. So, we end up with at least 900 trout instead of 1,000. And then, aside from that, just to pass along to the police chief if they could have the officers give it a look.
Good idea. Thank you. Michael?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. In Mr. Farucci's letter, he makes a statement. "It's a great morning filled with families." I was there last year, absolutely freezing cold. And it was. It was an event filled with families. And to see the excitement on the young children, you know, I'll be honest with you, I couldn't tell the difference between a trout and a cod, but I mean, you know, to see the excitement on the, on the faces and to see the involvement of the families. I don't know how you could not approve something like this. It's just another example of a great event in this community. And anything that we can do to assure that it goes off without a hitch, I feel we have the responsibility to do. So, I would gladly second this motion.
Very good, Michael. You're right. And these derbies do bring families together. It's a great time to spend outdoors, like you were saying. It maybe was a little cold, but it's, it's very good. It helps teach kids the importance of the environment as well. You know, taking care of the environment, you know, the surroundings that they have when they fish. And I think it's a great event, and I would have people to be a little more considerate because of this event and not go down there and try to catch all the fish, please. MYFM does a lot for our community as well. They do a lot to support various organizations and also town offices and communities. And I think we should do everything we can to help them. And I make that unanimous, that we make a proclamation to keep this lake free from fishing for that period of time.
Mr. Chairman, just one point, just to thank the Massachusetts Department of Fisheries and Wildlife. They do restock every year, and you get 1,000-plus sometimes fish. And they do that in many of the smaller ponds and lakes, just to kind of encourage people to go out into the environment and have a nice time. As my colleague Mike said, you know, you get a young kid and you take a picture of them, and they're holding this fish. To them, it's like a tuna. You know, it's the biggest fish they've ever seen. Could be a minnow, but nevertheless, a lot of them end up putting them right back in the water. So, you know, you end up with a vibrant environment because you leave it stagnant, that's where you start to lose it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. The next item on the agenda would be an executive session. We do have an executive session coming up. We should, we would go, now, just for my own curiosity and for my knowledge, we end the meeting right now and then go into executive session?
Roll call vote.
Sure, okay.
Whether or not you're going to come back, though.
Right, right.
And a list of topics, right?
Okay, yeah. So, right now, we'd, a roll call for executive session. Tom?
You have to explain the topics as well.
The topic would be where we would need to go into executive session to meet with Town Council Brian Murray and Attorney Jerry Moody to update the board on the status of a civil case, Sevisari versus the Town of Milford, and to receive attorney-client and expert-client communication of legal advice regarding reasonably anticipated litigation or legal issues to, the disclosure of which would compromise the Town of Milford's position in this matter. And we will not be returning to open session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into executive session to review attorney-client and expert-client communications of legal advice regarding reasonably anticipated litigation or legal issues, the disclosure of which would compromise the town's position, Ari Sevisari versus Town of Milford. And to also review attorney-client expert-client communications of legal advice regarding reasonably anticipated litigation or legal issues, the disclosure of which would compromise the town's position.
Do you have a second on that, Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make it unanimous.
Roll call, aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, we'll be going into executive session. We're going to be asking for a motion to end this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Michael?
Second that, Mr. Chairman.